All right, we're gonna do a mic check. Ben Vanoy, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, Commissioner.
All right, we can hear you as well. All right, welcome this afternoon. We have listed two meetings. The first one is our Board of Equalizations meeting, and we have seven items on that agenda. The first one on our regular agenda is to approve the Board of Equalization Assessor Approved Review Process Reports, as stated. And for now, just for reference purposes, Commissioner Gardner is on her way, and she said, "Go ahead and start." So until she gets here, I'll suspend the rules so that I can second any motions. So is there any questions to those? I don't see any in the motion.
Make a motion to approve Agenda Item One.
And I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes two zero. Number two is to approve the Board of Equalization Hearing Process Report, as stated. Number two, any questions to that one?
None. I'll make a motion to adopt Agenda Item Two.
And I'll second that. All in favor, say aye. Aye. That passes two zero. Number three is to approve or deny Board of Equalization to hear an appeal of property valuation after the filing deadline. As I read through this one, it looks like they're claiming there's a factual error, that they had a basement that was valued, and it was at zero percent, and they sent some pictures. Is that...
That's Burt Harvey, Clerk Auditor's Office. Yes, that's correct, Commissioner. The basis for number three is that they are saying that they have a basement that's listed with the county records, it's finished, but that is unfinished. So this would constitute a factual error and could be opened up to review that factual error and make any correction in value for that case.
Okay.
I don't know if anyone from the assessor's office wants to speak to that. I don't think anyone's here for...
Yeah, we're fine with that, to review it for a factual error.
Okay. Thank you.
Make a motion that we approve the appeal on Agenda Item Three.
I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes two zero. Number four is to approve or deny a petition to the Board of Equalization to hear an appeal of property valuation after the filing deadline. This one, it looks like they tried to file, presumably by July 29th.
The background information on this one, Commissioner, is that the appellant attempted to file their appeal on the online system and did not complete the process. We had the IT department look into where they'd gotten. Based on the information we have, they registered an account and put a serial number in there and then took no further action after that. They didn't even state a reason for their filing an appeal within the system. Typically, that's not unusual with the online system. A lot of people start an appeal on the online system and then abandon it when they find that they don't have evidence to upload, or they decide they don't want to do it online, they want to send it in, or they have questions or whatever. The online system itself is designed to be kind of a one-way street, meaning that you have to start an appeal, you have to finish it, and the finishing is you have to submit it. And there's information in the system makes that very clear. So I don't know whether necessarily this would rise to the level of an extraordinary unanticipated circumstance because, you know, they... From our standpoint, it looks like they just basically walked away from the registration and didn't take any further action on it. It's interesting to note here that the first time we're aware that there might have been a problem is when they communicated with our office after tax notices were mailed out. And they say they attempted to file on July 29th. So why did they wait so long to let us know that there was a problem? So anyways, that's our research and that's the information we have to give the board on this one.
Okay. Noted that Commissioner Gardner is here. Any questions to it?
No, unless she needs to have some insight on this. Make a motion, otherwise, to deny the petition in Agenda Four.
Which item?
Are you comfortable to...
Yeah.
To second that?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Yeah, I got a motion and a second to deny Agenda Item Number Four. All in favor, say aye.
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 That passes three zero. Number five is to approve or deny a Board of Equalization hearing to hear the appeal of property valuation after the filing deadline, as stated.
Yes, I'm looking for my... I did make a comment on this one in the agenda system that I wanted to try and find if I could real quick because I remember I did some research on this and gave some more information, but honestly, off the top of my head, I don't remember what I said. So although, yeah.
So Burt Garfield from the assessor's office. So if I'm right, this is the parcel in... Yes, it's in Mapleton. Mr. Flake came into the assessor's office the day taxes were due and said he'd wanted to talk to the assessor's office about lowering his value. I said, "You should have received evaluation notice, and you had to reply by September 15th." He said he didn't get the notice. It's a vacant lot. There's no way he could have gotten a notice at a vacant lot. We talked about that for a minute. I brought him over to the auditor's office, and he filed a late appeal. He claims that we had the wrong address for mailing the notice.
Yeah.
I believe it was sent to the address on the deed.
Yeah, I was about to bring that up. Thank you, Mr. Shawcroft. The notice, in my research, I looked at the notice history. This parcel came into existence in 20... With the 2020 tax year. The address recorded on the deed is the address that we were sending it to, and no update to the address was made. I don't think has been made even to date. The owners did pay their 2020 taxes late in January 2021, and I'm unsure as to why they would have not taken steps at that point to correct their address and to make sure the tax notice was going to the same place. That could have just been an oversight. But generally, to find for a basis of finding that failure to notify has to... The pouncer is supposed to show that the county had the address in error, due to a county error, and took no steps to correct that error once they found that. That's not the case here. The address was recorded by the title company and the deed provided. We sent the notice to the address record. I mean, I would assume the owner was aware of the address because they paid their taxes late, their 2020 taxes late. But, you know, that's an assumption on my part. Really, I'm not seeing anything where this is a county error.
I agree. Any comments to it?
No, I make a motion that we deny the appeal on Agenda Item Five.
I'll second that motion.
Got a motion and a second to deny the appeal on Agenda Item Number Five. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. That passes three zero. Number six is to approve or deny a petition to the Board of Equalization to hear the appeal of property valuation after the filing deadline. They're claiming this is factual or failure to notify.
In both cases, the notice history shows that the notice was sent to the same address since 2019. In this case, there was no returned notice, so we don't have any evidence of false notice. I'm not sure where he... I'm not sure what the factual error would be that he's referring to because the information he provided is not referring to a factual characteristic. He simply... I know he stated in his information that because other similar units in the complex where this unit is located were assessed lower, he wants the value lowered. So I'm not really seeing a basis for factual error there either because he's not referring to like the, you know, number of rooms, or lot size, or square footage finished, or anything else like that. Or even condition. He's just saying, "This one's lower. Mine should be lower too." And on the value, it is interesting to note that the only value difference he's asking for is a difference of $2,000, which on the overall value of the property, that represents less than 1% of the total value. I talked to Burt Garfield about this, and if he wants to speak further to this, but I talked to Burt Garfield about this. The State Tax Commission only requires the assessor's office to maintain a 5% margin of error for residential property. This is less than 1%. Basically, one is below 5%. We consider it properly valued. So I know Burt would like to...
Can I ask you one question, though?
Yeah, sure.
Before we move to that?
Yeah.
There were some comments in there about last year's appeal. And so if we could run through that, is it...
So last year's appeal got lowered. His value was lowered last year to 271,600.
Was that on this... Sorry, was this on this parcel or was this a different parcel? Because I know he owns multiple parcels.
I'm pretty sure it's under the same parcel number. So it was lowered... So last year, we had it 271,600. The next year, current year, we have it at 291,900.
And he was requesting a value of 289...
Yeah.
Something, 289, like it was like $11,000.
There's no... We don't believe there's any factual error. He's... His case is that we have other similar properties lowered, have lowered value, but that's not a factual error with the property.
You would consider...
It's an inequity of assessment argument. But just because he had his value last year doesn't mean we can't... We shouldn't increase it the following year.
Well, properties have gone up. We all know that.
Yeah. So, and like I said, and just for completeness sake, I did actually do the math on this one, and if we were to accept it and lower the value based on what he's asking, it's a difference of $11 in taxes. I mean, it's, you know, like I said, 1% in value is pretty below the margin of error, so... But, you know, as always, we leave it to the board's wisdom and understanding.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No.
You said that was $11 or 11%?
$11 and 28 cents total indifference of taxes between the current assessed value and what the taxes would be if we lowered it. It would be $11 less.
If it's valid, that's one thing. But if it's...
I mean, if he'd filed on time, I don't think there would be... I don't know that we'd really balk at the difference in value. It would be treated like any other appeal, but where it's a late appeal and they have to meet extra criteria.
I'll make a motion that we deny Agenda Item Six, then.
I'll second that motion.
Got a motion and a second to deny Agenda Item Number Six. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes two zero. Number seven is to approve or deny a petition to the Board of Equalization to hear the appeal of a property valuation, as stated.
And on this one, in looking at the valuation, looking at the appeal, it looks like he made a good faith effort to file this, to file these extra parcels. They filed online. He just did not add these parcels to the appeal, but they were included in the information. We missed it. We would have... We just didn't catch it when we initially started the appeal, so we just need to go ahead and get this on the system.
This would also be a factual error so we could open for that reason as well.
So explain the factual error on this.
There's a conservation easement on these parcels that I was unaware of.
Okay.
And so when I processed the parcel that did go through, you know, I was made aware of that. And so that...
Okay. That makes sense.
And from the auditor's office, what I'm saying is that it could... It definitely could be open for a factual error, but it probably would meet the criteria for unextraordinary circumstances because he did attempt to file the... He did make a good faith effort to file his appeal online, so...
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve Agenda Item Seven.
I'll second that motion.
Motion and a second to approve Agenda Item Number Seven. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes three zero. Final motion.
Make a motion we adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
Now adjourned from that meeting. If you'll hold one second as we change the recordings. There you go, okay. Welcome this afternoon to our Board of County Commissioners meeting. And as we always start with a prayer, reading, or a thought, and then followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. We look to anyone in the audience who would voluntarily like to participate with us in offering that prayer, reading, or thought, and then also the Pledge of Allegiance. Any volunteers? Which one are you doing? Prayer? Thank you, Eldon. Anybody else for the pledge? Thank you. Come on up. Oh, okay. I had it the other way, but that's all right. It doesn't matter.
Am I pledged?
You're the pledge, but we're gonna do the prayer first. Come on up, Eldon.
Our Father in Heaven, we thank thee for this opportunity to be here today to do the work of the county. We ask thee to bless the three commissioners that they might be guided in the things they decide. Help us as well, those others who participate, that we might as well be able to contribute in order that we all might gain from this. We ask thee to bless our county. Help the commissioners as well as those who are working and the citizens to have the best interests of the county in mind. We ask thee to illuminate the three commissioners as well as the rest of us. We ask thee to bless those in our county who are in need. Help us that we might be directed to their doors. We thank thee for our country. We ask thee to bless those who are in charge of our country, that they might also be guided. We say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
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 Eric Edwards, please repeat the Pledge of Allegiance after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have two work session items, and then we'll go after that to organizing our agenda. The work session item number one is a carryover to discuss the potential adoption of an ordinance amending Chapter 28 of the Utah County Code separating the consolidated offices of the clerk, county clerk, and county auditor. Ralph. We asked last week for a committee to be put together to do some analysis on this and come back to us today, and Ralph was that point person.
Okay, Ralph Barnes, Human Resources. Are you able to see this on your monitors? Great. So the team that was put together was Richard Nelson from Public Works, Dave Shawcroft's Civil Division Chief, myself, Lisa Shepherd's Senior Policy Advisor, and Josh Daniels. We were tasked with not determining if this should be done, but what it would cost and what would be the methods. Where would they reside? And what this office would look like. So the things that we looked at, we were asked to look at the cost of splitting the current clerk auditor office, and we were asked to look at the cost of labor, office, and equipment that would be required to do so. The first, you know, step in this is looking at staffing options. And there's been several, you know, discussions about what that might look like. Some of those have happened in public meetings. Some of them have not. Those who are in, you know, the committee all had things they wanted to say about what the staffing should look like or what it could look like. And so what we decided to do is just have the information available for the commission so that you would at least know, even though I think each of you have an idea of what you would like to see it look like. We wanted to make sure you had all the information on what it would look like with different variations of staffing options. So with that being said... And so what we did essentially is we looked at the minimal amount of staff, which is essentially the elected official, and then what it would look like if there was any support staff added on to that. So the proposal for the office is to move the victim advocates into the historic courthouse, expand that space into the new office for the elected official because that resides right next to the clerk auditor right now. There's essentially just a wall there. The estimated cost of remodels is about $78,000, about $79,000. And the annual lease increase for that office would be about $18,000, you know, per year. The... That was, you know, determined, you know, by Richard to be the least expensive way to do this because it does already reside there. It would require moving, hopefully, a minimal amount of staff. And other options that were presented were much more expensive than that. There's also an expected expense for the cost of equipment, phones and service, you know, for the computers. There's an annual cost for each staff of about, you know, $3,100. And if staff required a new, you know, PC, that would be about a $1,700 one-time cost. Anyone have any questions on that?
Did that moving of staff include moving the tax admin staff out of their current offices since they're housed in the marriage license and passport office, and that's a clerk function, and tax admin is an auditor function?
No, it did not. We did, you know, talk about if that should move and where that should actually end up residing, and that was still, you know, to be determined. Was there anything you had to add on that, Josh? That... Okay. Yeah, that one was still... That was something we talked about, but we didn't have a solution for that at that time. So that's a good question. Okay, any other questions on your preliminary thoughts on the office space?
No. Each year, we have requests for staff, additional staff, and they vary, of course, to the different departments. And so the additional cost for the phone and PC service, that would vary depending on what's been approved or may be approved. And that's an annual thing we go through. There's... I don't think there's ever a year that we don't go through a process of reviewing whether or not staff should be added.
Yeah, that's exactly right. So if we did add staff, we would almost always have those additional costs. It would have to be considered, correct.
And the remodeling, that may... I went through this list, and there's some things that they said that could be transferred, but that may or may not be true depending on what's available and the square footage that's there now. And if it can be adopted, then that estimate of remodel might be quite a bit less.
Yeah, and that was one thing that wasn't 100% understood is things like, you know, chairs and desks. You know, there's existing... I mean, it already exists. You know, the furniture is usable in both spaces, so that's something that still had to be determined. And it might actually, like you said, it might actually be a lower cost.
Right.
But with all the options that, you know, we talked about, this seemed to be the most efficient and lowest-cost option to make the office space. Okay. Yeah, so this would be essentially Option One, which is just adding, you know, the new, you know, elected official. And you can see the wages and benefits, you know, total about $175. That'd be a yearly cost. The equipment lease and lease is about 196... Well, it's 196 with the cost of the salaries and wages, so the total annual ongoing cost is about $196,000. If you add on the cost of the remodel and the equipment that are one-time costs, then you're looking at a first-year cost of about, you know, $276,000. And then that would, of course, you know, go down the second year because then you would just be looking at ongoing equipment costs and salaries and benefits. So the 196 is probably what you should focus on the most for ongoing. Of course, that would go up, you know, 2% to 3% a year, each year, depending upon wages. Any questions about this model? And this, of course, is the minimal thing we can do to add the elected office to get that on the, you know, to get that approved and get that ready to go. Okay.
Is this recommended? As an HR manager, would you recommend this?
Yeah, let me go through all of them, and then I'll tell you what I think, if you'd like my opinion.
Yeah, I would.
Okay. So, so option two would be to add one, one extra staff. Uh, this would be, you know, the confidential assistant was the option that was, would be essentially recommended, or I should, should say, you know, the committee thought that this would be the next logical step if, uh, we were to add additional staff. And you can see how this changes the costs, uh, you know, two fifty-nine for the, or, or two sixty about for the labor. Uh, you know, two eighty-three, you know, total for labor and equipment ongoing, and then a total of first year cost of about, about three hundred and sixty-six. Any, any questions on this one? Okay. We, you know, discussed an option three, which is, and this was, you know, based upon something that's, has come up several times in, in some of the, of the meetings, you know, previous, is that there is a, you know, potential conflict in the, you know, public services office where you have one individual doing the, uh, the work of, you know, two different elected officials. And so the, um, you know, the request is that we add another role here so that that, that conflict is eliminated and with the thought that that work will be there and that this office will continue to grow. So with that, the manager of public services would be, uh, would, would, would be something that if was added, would increase the cost by what you can see here. Uh, essentially four hundred thousand dollars ongoing costs, uh, for that, for that option. One thing I did want to mention is that in the option, in these options with less staff, there's, uh, there was essentially a discussion that there may or may not be current available staff in one of these offices who could fulfill some of those responsibilities. So that's something that is still up for debate and that would be something that I think the commission and the current, you know, clerk auditor would need to work out.
So if they were changing the responsibilities, would we change their job description and i.e. do a new salary?
If, if the role changed, we would absolutely have to do that to make it, make it correct.
We couldn't just give people more responsibilities?
No, no. If, you know, the nature of their job changed and they had more responsibility, we would need to do essentially a classification of that position and look at the pay and make sure it was appropriate. The, uh, yeah, of course, there's always the case where it would be a change in responsibilities, but not necessarily an increase, but yes, it would have to be evaluated. Yeah, that's, that's a good question as well. And then this was, would what be, you know, considered to be, um, the full staff or the most staff that would be required, I think, would have, was how it was defined. And this, this, so like, I guess in an ideal world, if the new elected official could have, was able to have these, you know, additional roles, uh, it would, you know, I guess, you know, be an ideal situation for that elected official uh, as they came into office. So then you can see the associated costs is, um, you know, in the first year, you're looking at over seven hundred thousand and ongoing of about six hundred and twenty-two thousand. And that's, that's equipment and lease. So, you know, the question was asked of me, uh, from an HR standpoint, in my experience, what would be the best thing to do? I do, um, I would hesitate in adding a new elected official without any support. The common practice throughout the counties, especially larger counties, is to have a deputy. It's, there's not really, I couldn't find a case actually where there wasn't a deputy for an elected official and
Like a county of the second class, there isn't a single other county of a second class where an elected official doesn't have a chief deputy that you could find.
That's correct. That's correct. And so, um, you know, the confidential assistants were not as, I mean, it was, that was hit and miss that I could find. So, uh, it would, I guess, again, my, my experience in, in staffing and adding roles, uh, you want to just be, you know, prepared and ready for uh, something like this so that you have, uh, I guess, an assurity of success and not to put someone in a, you know, position where they're, uh, essentially maybe starting out with a, uh, you know, deficit that could be hard for them to overcome depending upon what the current elected official or depending upon, I guess, the outcome of the election, who the other elected official is, that could be a challenge there. Now, with that being said, even though I would recommend that there's a plan for there to be, uh, some sort of support staff in place, the fact that we have a year does give us some time to evaluate that. And, uh, further, so if the intent of, of the commission is to get this approved and ready to be on the ballot for an election, then you could, I guess theoretically go with the minimal approach with the intent of continuing to evaluate this. Because again, I, I wouldn't recommend, this is just me as an H- HR director, having a plan for someone being elected at the end of next year and there not being a plan for how that office is going to operate. I think that's, that's where the risk lies. And again, that's just my opinion, that, uh, that would need to be something that is more thoroughly, you know, vetted and discussed and planned. I, I don't want to see someone elected in an office with no plan. And then they have to come in and fight out who they're going to have working in some of these roles that are probably a central, central position. So, um,
I have a question. If you couldn't find a single other county of the second class that had an elected official that didn't have a chief deputy, why does option two give the elected official a confidential assistant and not a chief deputy?
The, the reason for that is, you know, the discussion amongst the team was that there may be other staff in the office who could fulfill that role. And I don't know what that, I don't know what that looks like, actually. It just was what, what the discussion was. That's why that came out to be option two. Is there, that could be, that could be a possibility. Now, you could switch those. You could have, I mean, really, it seems logical to me that that's the chief deputy and not the confidential assistant. But because there was, the team felt like there may be an opportunity with current staffing to utilize someone who's already in place for some of those responsibilities, that's why this ended up being number two.
Guess the clerk already has, the clerk already has a chief deputy. And so that person would transition to that auditor in number option four. So you could have the elected auditor there and the chief deputies, which is already there and already being funded. So there's no increase there. So it, it really seems like it boils down to just one elected position that we're focusing on and the chief deputy that's currently sitting. That position could then transfer to that new elected official.
Yeah, there's a lot of ways it could play out. Again, we had, I mean, there is time, so that's, that's the good thing. I, I just, again, I would be concerned if we went forward with the elected official only with no plan or no further discussions. There just needs to be, as we get into next year and we see how things play out uh, with, uh, the current, you know, clerk auditor department and some, some of the growth they're experiencing. If that is exactly as expected, then I think a discussion would need to be had on how, uh, you know, we can best be ready for this new office. I think that would be the responsible thing.
Yes, and a couple of weeks ago, I visited with the clerk auditor that, we, you know, worked this through maybe more formalized presentation by the first commission meeting in February, which is February second, and have those other additional points brought out. But again, we have a chief deputy in place now. The position, position is there, we just simply transfer on over.
Right, for one of the two elected positions. But if you have two elected positions and one chief deputy and they go with one of the elected officials, the other elected official doesn't have a chief deputy.
Right.
Right, that's my point.
That's where you have your chief financial officer. That may be the person that could serve as the, uh, chief deputy.
I'm not sure if making the person who prepares the CAFR an elected position is a, is a wise idea. I think that we should, yeah, there are some things in what we do that shouldn't be political. Elections is one of those positions. So the elections director should not be appointed. They should be a merit position. And the other one is we need to be able to have financial professionals that can give their professional opinion. They need to have qualifications and they shouldn't be appointed because that would make those positions too political. So I think that we would definitely need to discuss that and think about it and do what's best for the county.
Agreed. Um, any questions about the office space? You know, Glenn's here available to answer those if you have any further questions on the office space proposal?
Only that I thought that the price tag probably could be a lot less than that, but that's, we'll have to look at the floor sp- space. But that's a nice, at least we have some of the rough numbers to work with. Uh, especially as you pointed out, we might not need to do certain things on that list. So that was very helpful.
And, uh, there's other members here of the team, if you have any questions for them?
So I just want to make sure, uh, so on a, on a legal side, the only thing that would have to be done would be the elected official. Everything else would be discretionary.
Yes, that, that's correct. Everything else is within the, the budget discussions as to what funding, someone, the commissioners deem to be appropriate. But as far as the legal basis, the salary and benefits of the elected official, that's the only required position to fund legally.
Legally, okay. And then, uh, so I understand the different options in there and I, I mean, we do have to support. There's got to be a certain amount of support and I totally get that and understand that and what that looks like. That, the one that always kind of bothered me was over in marriage and, and licensing over there, our passports and licensing, marriage licensing, um, how that would work out. That one's a little bit fuzzy um, on how that would, you know, kind of work. It's, what was, what was the conversation with the group on that?
You know, if it's okay, I'd hand that off to Josh. He had quite a bit of information regarding how that would look and, uh,
Yeah, I mean, currently there's a shared employee who essentially serves functions that are considered auditor functions and clerk functions, tax administration, BOE, those kinds of things, and the public service counter. So, um, somebody, you know, one thought was, well, you could just continue to have a shared service model, which is an interesting idea because it kind of opens up something that was even discussed months ago for the county as a whole, which would be what if you went to like a one-stop shop system for the entire county. Every member of the public who comes to the county building for some kind of a public service could go to a one-stop shop where they receive service that falls within the functions of many different elected departments. And you could, you could potentially put together a customer service team that is, uh, overseen in some sense by each of those elected officials in a collaborative way. So it's an interesting idea. And so I suppose there's one, one way that you could proceed, which is to say, just proceed with no change and let the clerk and the auditor together collaborate in the oversight of their respective functions that are carried out by this consolidated customer service option, uh, operation. So that, that's one, one idea, which is why we didn't necessarily say that you had to move the tax administration function. So, but then the other option would be, well, if you do separate the functions, uh, between the tax administration function and the public service function is what we call it, marriage license and passport. Um, then you would need to hire, I think, at a minimum, some sort of a customer service manager, you know, who oversees that public service operation. And then you would move the tax administration team somewhere else and they'd have their own, you know, space and, um, and kind of work with the auditor's office. So that, that's kind of the two options that we were thinking about and, uh, yep.
So, uh, and I appreciate that. Thank you on that. Um, that there are some interesting concepts there. It would, you know, we're talking about, um, uh, positions. And if one position increased, then there's got to be, you know, redefining of what goes on. But there's also on the other side, there's a position where it might, if there's a separation, there's a decrease too. You know, in, in, in what, in what happens with responsibilities. It's interesting on this one, Josh, talking, uh, you know, if we share the office and do a one-stop, I think that's, that's a fascinating one to look at. What, I remember when I came in and I don't, I don't remember looking at all the org charts to see how it works, but the, the, the marriage licensing and the passport was up on the third floor and it was in that little space in between. And there was, there was, there was the two positions that were there and, and they basically ran the whole thing. They, they did it all. Who did they report to? Who was their manager?
I think that changed over the years and there was different models where they reported to different people. Most recently, they reported to the person who acts as the tax administration supervisor.
So was, was it a function, uh, an add-on function that was just kind of put in there and said, let's put a supervisor in place on this one? Because it seemed to work as solo with just those two that were working it, you know, without necessarily a direct supervisor in there. I'm just wondering how that
Well, I mean, if you go all the way back, there was a period of time where the tax administration supervisor oversaw not just those functions, but also elections. So you had an auditor function where you had somebody who, whose direct responsibility was, or at least their expertise was in tax administration. But from a supervisory standpoint in the office, they oversaw a variety of staff, which included clerk functions, elections being one of them, marriage license passports being another one. And then I don't know if they got away from that, but then they went back to it more recently, which is the model, uh, that we inherited in twenty nineteen.
So I guess the
Does Bert, does Bert have anything to add on this? I mean, you were here before we were. You predate us here. Yeah, would you like to come up and maybe give us?
Maybe, maybe before we go to there, just to kind of follow up with it. The question lies with, uh, I would think on the tax admin side, some way there on a, um, uh, you know, a supervisory role would be needed and necessary. But I'm wondering on the other side, if a supervisor is a needed and necessary role for that other side? That's, that's the question ultimately.
Yeah, because the way that we, the way that we do the public service now is we largely rely on, um, you know, part-time customer service associates as the frontline, so to speak, at the customer service desk. And based on the foot traffic and the, and the volume, um, you know, we have shifts. So, because we're open eight to seven thirty PM with a little bit of time on Saturday as well. And so there's just a, a coordination and oversight that happens with those shifts and, and with those variety of, uh, part-time.
And I'm not trying to say that they don't have a supervisor in the org chart.
Right.
That's not, that's not the intent. The intent is, is that it was, it was kind of maybe coupled with, you know, others instead of
Well, I think it's also important to note that that office used to not really truly serve the public well. They were not known for serving the public well. And the general fund subsidized that office to about a tune of about a hundred, hundred and fifty thousand dollars on average. It would give or take. Some years they'd put into the general fund, sometimes they'd take out of the general fund, but it was usually around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now that office is considered, uh, a, an incredibly well-run office that has a four-point-nine star Google rating. People come from other counties to get service there. We are the number one provider of passports in the county. We offer passport photos now, which we didn't offer before. We perform marriages now, which we didn't do before. And we made one point three million dollars this year. And so that office, not only does it serve the citizens better, but it pays for itself and it funds and it actually supplements our general fund. But in order to stay that way, they need a, they need a supervisor that can run that office because it's becoming, you're right, it did used to be two ladies that sat there and did that. But now it's become a place that is, you know, can be pride and joy of the county and itself funds. We could go back to just having two ladies that fill out pieces of paper. But the office funds itself, so there's no reason to. Right? We can continue offering an exemplary service to the citizens and then the citizens pay a fee for that service and it funds itself. So the citizens are getting a superior service and it's funding itself. There's no reason to go back to how it was before.
Yeah, I mean, there's, I mean, there might be philosophical alignment or misalignment, however you want to look at it. I mean, that's not for this conversation, but still, what, what was your perception?
I was going to say, if you'd like to know a little bit more of the history, uh, the marriage license and passport office, as, as, uh, Josh said, was originally supervised by the person in my position, which, uh, held the position before I got there, which was Carrie, uh, Carrie McConnell. Uh, when he started with clerk auditor's office, he supervised both elections, uh, marriage license passports and, uh, tax administration. Uh, when Brian Thompson took over the office, uh, Brian attempted to reorganize a little bit and, and kind of not have Carrie running around like a chick, like a person with his head on fire all the time and brought on a chief deputy. And Scott Hogan then at that point took over the direct supervision of both elections and marriage license and passports, uh, which allowed Carrie to focus on tax administration. When I took over the office, I had tax administration. And due to the, uh, growth and the, uh, general complexity that elections had evolved into, I took over, uh, my position, then took back over the marriage license and passport division so the elections could focus just on elections. And that's where we were at when, uh, Amelia and Josh took office in twenty eighteen. So that's kind of the history of, of where it comes from. That only takes us back to the, the year two thousand. Prior to that, uh, I'm not totally aware of the history, but that, that was, that, that was basically history from, uh, two thousand until, until now.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Is there anything else you need from me?
So, see, we went over the legal side of it. We went over the financial possibilities, what it might look like on a, uh, you know, a square footage basis and, and what that would, that would, uh, that would look like. Was there any other items that, that you talked about or that came up in your discussions?
No, just, you know, the staffing, uh, options and what, what the commission wants is really, that was all. It was, it was those items.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Sure.
Typically with a work session, we leave it open if there's other comments. I don't know if there's other comments. Glenn, if you had any or some that were on, on there. Lisa?
Thank you, Lisa Shepherd, Utah County Commission, part of the committee. One thing I just wanted to note it for any of the public that's watching, some of these funds that we're talking about are internal service funds. So when we look at the cost, if I understand it correctly, when we look at the cost for the building, there's going to be hard cost and then there's going to be cost of our employees who would be doing that construction or if we are actually bidding that out. So that's just, are we bidding that out or are we doing that ourselves? That would be a question that I had. I guess it's for you guys to see if you want us to respond to it. But just wanted the people to know those ongoing costs, like the rent, that rent is already being paid by the county for all these spaces. It's just being allocated to the certain departments. That's all I wanted to mention.
So on all those options, uh, the commission saying there was, I think, like seventy-eight, seventy-nine thousand dollars, that's a hard cost. That's going to be a contractor probably coming in and remodeling and that was a bid out cost that we got an estimate on in that short period of time based on projects that we've done recently in the, in the building. So that is going to be a hard cost.
And that's, um, projected, it's not a real, I mean, right?
I mean, yeah, I mean, yeah, we haven't
We don't know.
Yeah, I mean, we haven't been it out.
The cost of lumber is going to do, right? The cost of lumber could double again.
Estimate could go up or down, but that's pretty, pretty straight cost for you, so.
Someone on Zoom? Okay, if they, if they'll state their name.
Benjamin Young, if you'd like to go ahead and unmute yourself and proceed.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, perfect. Hey, uh, I just wanted to add that as a, as a former auditor, the, the level of technical expertise required to do governmental audits, uh, to stay up with changes on that, to stay up with auditing standards. with auditing standards, is, is very extensive to pair it with an unrelated job. I, I think it would, it would degrade the quality of the audit, so I would just be in favor of separating the clerk and auditor from the level of technical expertise required perspective. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Seeing no one else jump up or any hands raised. Okay, we, we will, we'll move from, from that work session item to number two, to discuss the decision of the Utah County Auditor's Office to no longer provide the Board of County Commissioners with the Utah County, with the audit recommendations and the audit payroll module. So I put this on. I wanted to talk about this because I, there were some concerns. I received an email from the audit, audit office, and, and there's a couple of things in here. There's, there was talking about first, an internal audit team and how they prepare the audit plan for 2022. And second, there's in the email, talking about the internal audit team, asking for any, if there's any concerns with internal fraud, waste, abuse, violations, and so forth, to submit them to the hotline. The third one, or the, the next paragraph to this, the combination of these two audit activities will provide a robust and efficient, efficient method in monitoring and reporting compliance with the financial procedure, policies and procedures through the county compared to a 100% review that, that they're currently doing. They're doing a 100% review. And, and we see, we see those reviews as commissioners. And, and this is apparently, according to this, this email, no longer going to happen. And so I have some concerns with no longer happening on a 100% basis, which I know all of us look at those reviews and have an opportunity to make comments or questions, or even deny or whatever the case may be. And so I'm concerned about this, what I'm, what I'm seeing is lack of information that would be coming to the commission, because right now we get 100%. I'm not sure what spot audits would give, if that's going to turn out to be 10%, 15%, 50%, not sure. And so because this is a tool that has been, that I have used repeatedly, and, and I, and I know this year, there was, there was a one period of time in which the, there was an audit, or an A, which means that it, there was a, there was an action on there, on our payroll system, not a payroll, but our AP system. And I look at that, and there was, there was no comments. And so I asked that that be changed so that I could see the comments, because I think for me, as, as one that has to vote on this, and to stand up to it, I want to see the comments, and that was changed so that I can see the comments. And now this, this email says, as of the beginning of the year, these things will change, couple of things will change. It was just given a heads-up in the AP module system. So that was concerning to me that I wanted to bring it forward into a work session, and, and this is the opportunity I have to discuss that with my fellow commissioners and see if they use that, those same recommendations from the auditor and look through those recommendations to see if they, you know, apply, or if it does create questions for them. I know on an efficiency basis, it's easy not to have that in there and to kind of just kind of run past the commission and get it done, but I'm not sure if that's the proper way, if we're actually looking for, trying to have internal controls. And so I just want to know what your thoughts were on, on what that looks like going forward.
Yeah, I can, I can give you my thoughts. I mean, I was the auditor, and I know that some of those thoughts, some of those comments that have been there have, have been unnecessarily caused problems. For example, someone in accounts payable will put a comment in there and say, this should have received bids. And it did receive bids, but they don't know that because they're not the purchasing manager. But the purchasing manager already looked at it and gave it bids. And so some of these comments were, because it's such a burden on the county, there's not time to have collaboration for every purchase. And so what would happen is, the employee in the auditor's office would literally just go through on their own and say, this needs to occur, this needs to occur, and this needs to occur, and this needs to occur. Now, 99% of the time, it did occur, and it happened. But because there's a comment, then historically, commissioners have thought there was a problem and held things when there was no problem. And so I think that in some of these cases, in the vast majority of these cases, I would say 99% of these cases, those were just merely comments, but they were taken as concerns, and they actually weren't concerns. So there's one, there's one. We actually have a really good purchasing manager. I think, I think he does a very good job. We've got a great staff there. They review these purchases, and if there's a problem with a purchase, they flag it. And so comments will still be in there. If the purchasing department sees a problem with a purchase, they're still going to flag it. What we're saying is that we don't need an employee who actually may not see the whole process to go through and put comments that may be conceived as concerns when actually they're not. I think we have to look through, not only are we looking through efficiencies, but we want to look at overall risk versus reward. And I think the amount of money that it's costing us to do this is significantly more than the amount that would get caught. So there's one. I think another one is, we, we have really good policies in place. We, as a commission, set a budget. Let's say we, we set a budget for the sheriff. The sheriff is an independently elected official. He's elected by the people of this county to look after public safety. We set a budget for him. We also have purchasing policies. Those policies have thresholds. If there's a purchase that falls within his budget, that follows the correct purchasing policy as overseen by our purchasing manager, and it's below his threshold, that's actually his legal prerogative to spend that money, and he was elected by the people of this county to spend that money. And so as long as it's within the threshold, I think it's okay, and I think that our risk versus reward does not pan out. However, if there's an issue, we absolutely need to be made aware of it. We just don't need to necessarily have the comment on every single thing. We have processes in place, we have competent employees, and we have seven other elected officials who were elected by the people of this county. And as long as we're within those parameters, then I think it's not worth the taxpayers' money to spend the time to go through and double-check all the work. There's just, it's, the ROI is not there. It's not good for the taxpayer, it's not respectful to the elected official. But you're right, if there is a concern, we absolutely need to be made aware of it. And I think that we have, I think that that needs to continue if there's a concern. But where there's not a concern, I don't think we need to comment on everything.
Okay. And they don't comment on everything. They're just, they're checking here and there. I am concerned, though, that there's a certain ROI to this, because if we catch any kind of fraud or any kind of misuse, which we have, we have denied things in the past. We've all, three of us, denied, denied it. And, and my concern is, is that we don't see it. And so here's, here's, here's the real-life scenario of how this happens. A purchase order is generated, it goes in as a purchase order, it takes two commissioners to sign off on it, and then it goes away. Sometimes that third commissioner doesn't even see it until it's at the end, which I think has some problems to it, because there's never a chance to even ask a question. And there's been times in the past in which a PO has generated, and then it gets to the end, and there's been a question added to it, and the next commissioner says, oh, I didn't even know. Well, if there was a comment in there before, then there would have been some discussion to it. But it moves through the system, and it gets to the end. Now, is that an auditing thing? Not necessarily, that may be a function thing, or it may be a, you know, a purchasing. And do we need to beef up the purchasing end of this thing to say, okay, here's, here's the parameters? Because there are, there are times in which it starts to go through the process, and all of us have denied it. And yet it's still gone through the, you know, it's still gone through purchasing or still gone through. So I'm, I'm not quite there when it comes to the ROI where we may catch, we may not catch all of them, but we're, so the, the risk of, of spending monies to, you know, not, not catch them all is not significant enough for us to do this, because I know for me, I don't live in that world, and so I rely on the individuals as the gatekeepers, the purchasing manager or the gatekeeper, to go through and look at this. And if it does not add up, they don't have enough bids, or they don't have anything, then it should never even go on as a purchase order.
Right, and that's a process, this actually wouldn't affect that process, and I agree with you. And I think that we absolutely need to go through and look at our system, and I think we need to beef up our system, so that if it doesn't, if it doesn't clear the gate of the purchasing manager, it doesn't ever get to that point. But I think those are two separate processes.
Yeah. But, and then, so the auditor is supposed to look, and the audit, the auditing function is to look at that to make sure this, it's been done according to the, the budget, the financial, there's a budget in there.
Right.
That they're, they're compliant, you know, when it comes to rules, regulations, policies, and laws. All those things need to be looked at. And if there's possibilities of, well, you know what, this, okay, let's just say that this doesn't quite reach illegal, but is this best practice? I think that the commissioners should know that.
I agree.
And I think that we should be able to say, wait a second, why are we not backing up on this and doing something on the front end or whatever? Because that's their function as an auditor, is to flag it and say, hmm, I think we're skirted close to the line.
I'd like to follow up on this topic, if we could. I, it, it sounds like it's something that could be done during an administrative meeting, go through the process, what they have in mind, and address it more fully. Because when I saw that, I wasn't sure what that meant, and so I had questions. And taxpayer dollars must be used as judiciously as we possibly can make it, and ensuring that the dollars are being wisely spent is, is part of that ROI for the taxpayer. So I'm, I, when I saw that, I was curious what that meant, and so I wanted some more detail. Maybe, again, I'd like to follow up with this, maybe as an administrative item.
And we can.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think, and actually updates, you know, I, I agree with you, Commissioner Sakovic, and I think updates to the purchasing system that would actually do exactly what, commissionarily what you want, have literally been on the project list for IT since 2020. So I would love to see us get to those projects in 2022 and solve the problem exactly like you're describing.
So meanwhile, I mean, this, this is saying that things are going to change in January, and we're not going to get the information, apparently, that we're used to getting and being able to see, so we'd have to work quick on it.
I agree. I think we can work quickly.
Any other comments? Okay.
Thank you.
We will move then to a regular agenda. We will now organize our regular agenda, or our agenda, and on our agenda, we have two, we have a consent agenda and a regular agenda. Our consent agenda, I feel like a broken record saying this over and over, but I never know if somebody's listening for the first time, so I have to do it.
But you do it really well.
So the consent, the consent agenda is empty, and it's empty on purpose. We're hoping to fill it. If, if all three commissioners have looked down through these items on their own individual accord and found that there's no problem with an item, then we don't hold it. And so it will go on to our consent agenda. If we hold an item as we go down through it, it will stay on regular agenda to, for discussion and action. So, so with that, let's start with items number one through 10. Are there any on there that a commissioner would like to hold?
I have none.
I have none.
Let's do items, just to rest the page, I don't know if your page breaks the same as mine, but 11 through 17.
Same as mine. I think we need, let's, let's strike number 13. I don't think we're ready for that one yet, but we can discuss it.
Oh, that's, yes. You want to strike that?
Yeah.
I think that's why it's probably to strike.
I think we strike it and discuss it, yeah.
We don't have all the names yet.
So we'll strike that, and we'll put it back on when we're ready for it.
Since all, since all three of us agree to that, to strike, we'll leave it on consent to strike.
And I would hold item number 15.
Hold item number 15? Okay. And number 16, let's hold item number 16 just for some conversation.
Let's hold 17 as well for some quick conversation.
17? Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, the next page. From 18 to 26. Which items do you want to hold there? Obviously, we'll hold item number 25 and 26.
And number 23, I don't know if we need to hold that, it's just simply the date and time, location's already addressed, and so we can just simply consent to that.
Yeah, we don't, we don't need to hold it because it's all written in.
Right there. Okay.
Okay.
5 and 26.
And then on our closed meetings, items 27, 28, 29, and 30, I have that we need 27, 28, and 30. Are there any others?
Nope, so we can strike item number 29.
Okay, so we'll leave it on consent that we're striking number 29, and also we'll leave it on consent that we're approving and setting a date, time, and location as, as specified in 27, 28, and 30. All right, Alice? Want to run through that?
You bet. And I hope I got the first part, because I was being talked to. I have the first one being held is, well, I guess we're striking 13.
Right.
And then holding 15, 16, 17, 25, 26. And then for our closed meetings, we're going to hold 27, 28, striking 29, and holding 30, as stated.
Yes. Okay. All right. Thank you. So let's go back now to item number 15. This one's to approve and authorize the signing of an agreement with the bright lights to the purchaser. So I thought this was a ratification.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I held it.
Okay.
That, and while we're holding it, so we can change it to say ratification, we can also announce it.
Yep. Okay, very good. Go ahead.
So item number 15, we, we, as a county, in conjunction with downtown Provo City, have, have decided to, using some tourism dollars, increase the Christmas lights and the holiday lights in the downtown corridor. Provo City has, has already done this, and we're going to join with them in doing this. There have been some news stories recently that downtown Salt Lake City is pairing back some of its holiday light celebrations, and there have been some restrictions placed on some of the holiday events taking place in downtown. And we wanted the citizens of the state of Utah to know that all people are welcome in downtown Provo to celebrate the holiday season, regardless of what holiday they celebrate, whether it be Christmas, Hanukkah, or other. We want all of the citizens of Utah to know that downtown Provo is decorated and ready to celebrate with them. If you notice, in Provo, starting at Pioneer Park, just off the Center Street exit, all the way down the downtown corridor, and as of this weekend, now also the county building has increased the decorations for the citizens. We want to bring, we want you to bring your families down. All citizens are welcome to celebrate the holiday season and to enjoy our beautiful downtown area, and, and be part of this festive holiday season. So with that, this is a ratification of using some tourism dollars to, to decorate and participate with Provo, excuse me, in decorating the downtown area. So for item number 15, I'll make a motion to ratify an agreement with bright lights to purchase services, to install, and take down holiday lighting at the Utah County Downtown Provo campus.
And I will second that motion.
I got a motion and a, and a second. And just for clarification, in case you don't know what ratify means, what happened is the attorney's office, there was an agreement in place, they sent that around on an individual basis to all three commissioners to see if they would agree to that, just because of the condensed timeline that we had in place. And so that, on an individual basis, they responded back to the attorney's office, and that's where we get the ratification. So it's already been agreed to by the commission through the, through the legal department to, to go ahead with, with that contract. So that's what, that's what ratifying. And it has to take all three commissioners to actually do that, or else it goes on the next agenda. So obviously, all three of us agreed. And thank you for your work on this. I think that that's fantastic, that we can move in this direction.
Yeah, absolutely.
So we have a motion and a second to approve, ratify the agreement as, as stated, number 15. All in favor, say aye.
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 And those lights will be up through New Year.
Yes. Okay, number 16, Ralph. This is to adopt a resolution approving revisions to the human resource management policy, the overtime policy. I had quite an extensive conversations with, with Ralph on this to just kind of tie up what that meant on overtime. This is, this is with the sheriff's department, and it's on the use. the use of deputies for events in which they they fund it, they they hire, they hire the deputies to help staff do traffic and so forth. Some of the concerns I had were what what if a deputy already had, you know, they're allotted 86 hours, would that affect their overtime? And and I'll let you speak to that, but I was just, these are some of the concerns I had. Or what does it mean on overtime if they're already, if they are already paying for the overtime in in the 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 fee? If that's already in there? And you said that that was already in there. The next, the thing that I want you to address as well, though, is is as as the deputy salaries increase, that we probably will need to look at what that fee looks like into the future as that continues to increase. It can't just stay at the same, it would probably have to move. But from what I understand, they're having a hard time getting deputies to accept some of these, which is kind of extra and it was paid on straight time. And and there is, it does turn out to be overtime in in many cases. So go ahead, Ralph.
Okay, sure. So the way it is set up now is it is currently, like you said, you know, straight time pay for anytime they take one of these contract shifts. And the the change here is it's it's technically not overtime. I realize it's in the overtime policy, but that's where the original version of the policy was. At some point in the future, we probably need to correct that. Because it really is, should be considered a pay premium of time and a half. So because they're not, haven't reached three.
Thanks for pointing that out. It just says overtime policy and it always just thinks, looks like overtime.
I got, I laughed because it's like, how many times in the last three years have I heard, sometime in the future, we should correct that.
It only takes three years to change something, so. But yeah, it was in there already in the overtime policy, which again, even in the previous version, didn't really make sense. But yeah. So how it works currently is when they take one of these overtime shifts, it's it's straight time. And or I'm sorry, one of these contract shifts, not overtime. It's time and a half. It's only overtime once they work over 86 hours. That's overtime, according to the federal standards. Now, what we had previously talked about, I must say, there is a little bit of confusion on still. And so we may need to clarify this before we go forward. And so my understanding in court, and you may want, I'd love to bring court into this because, you know, he's, he's, you know, the brains behind the operation here.
Get our worth out of him before the end of the year.
That's right. Well, I didn't want to say that, but you know. So the way it works currently, and I I confirm this with payroll just this morning, is because I had kind of received, you know, two different forms of information. Is the way that it works currently in payroll, when they take one of these shifts, a contract shift, and they're paid at straight time, it does count towards their 86 hours. And they get overtime at 86 hours, counting the contract shift. So in order to, if the intent is to change that so that those hours, you know, don't count, we would have to make a change in workday, which we can do. I just think there may be a little bit of a difference of opinion of what the intent is here that maybe needs to be clarified. So or needs to be clarified. Because if the intent is for them to get this premium, you know, to work one of these shifts at any time, regardless of where they are in their hours, and that counts towards their 86 hours work, that's considerably different than it not counting. And that's, that needs to be clarified.
Because.
Because that's, I know that's not what I told you.
Yeah, I know, that's, yeah, that's, that's interesting because so what you're saying is, is that let's say that somebody works one of these shifts and they work it for four hours. And they get the premium pay for that four hours within their, you know, their their time allotment with 86, 86 hours. But if they work 90 hours, which technically would be that four hours that we're talking about, they're going to get paid overtime and premium pay.
That's correct. That's the way it was explained to me this morning by payroll.
Okay.
Court, anything you'd like to add?
Well, I can't speak for the sheriff at this point, but I believe the intent is for what would be reasonable is to have these shifts be a premium pay and not count towards overtime because they wouldn't be, they're not intended to be part of their regular work schedule. But to to affirmatively say that, I'd still have to talk to Sheriff Smith.
And as far as I understand, these are for the contract work. So there is someone else paying that wage. So this doesn't actually affect the tax dollars. This is just the HR policy saying that they have the ability to receive premium pay when they're being contracted by someone else to work an event or venue.
Correct.
No, but it does affect tax dollars.
The contract is with Utah County, not with them. So when they're out there working hours, that will go towards their maximum hours for the period.
And that's where it does.
And if the tail end, if that makes them go over, then there will be an effect.
On tax dollars.
A penalty to.
Oh, on the tail end.
Yeah.
Because of the tail end, they're getting overtime now, which they wouldn't have received but for the contract work that they performed earlier in there.
Correct, but this policy is really is regarding the contract work.
It's it, it it's actually how much the contractor is going to pay Utah County.
Right.
And then it's sort of passed through to the employee, but that employee is being paid by Utah County, not by that contractor.
Correct, yes, I understood that.
And and this is all part of a, something to come to the commission once this is nailed down. The sheriff is also exploring the option of having a third party arrange all of these contracts electronically. So they'll be, it'll all be wrapped up into one.
So it sounds like this is something we need to continue for a period of time. Yeah, I think, I think if we, you know, continue it for next week and have it on the agenda, you know, prior to, you know, his item to, right, to add this, this, this service, I think we can have it resolved by then. Because that was my understanding as well, what we, you know, talked about is that it would not count. But I just need to make sure, we have to change the system and workday to make, which which we can do. That's not a problem. It's just that was information I didn't have when we talked.
So I'll make a motion to continue this to the next commission meeting.
And I will second the motion.
Got a motion and a second, continue item number 16 to our next meeting. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, that passes 3-0. Number 17 is to adopt a resolution approving the revision of the Human Resource Management Policy, 5-500, and it is leave.
We, do you want me to start or?
Yeah.
We are proposing to add, you know, Juneteenth is an official holiday of Utah County. That is, of course, the the date that slaves were announced to be free in Texas. That's where that started, is my understanding. And it's, you know, federally recognized. Most of the counties are following suit in Utah.
The state did recognize it as well.
Has that, has that become official? That that was the expectation, I hadn't received official word. So the state, I understand, is 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 adding it as well. I think it's a great move, I think we should totally do it. And, you know, I think, anything else you'd like to add?
Yeah, I I agree, I think it's a great move. I think it's great to commemorate a holiday that shows the damage that can be done when people are, when information is withheld. Right? And I think in this day and age when we see censorship being being thrown all over, particularly in the spreading of news, right? In the last 18 months, we've seen multiple times where facts, truth was suppressed on social media. It was not reported by the mainstream media, it was not reported on social media. People were penalized for spreading truth and facts, and I think that's what happened on Juneteenth. The slaves in Texas didn't know they were free because nobody told them about the Emancipation Proclamation. And I think it is great that we as a society recognize that when we withhold the truth from people, damage can occur. And so I I fully support us recognizing Juneteenth so that we as a society can commemorate that when you withhold truth from people, no good can come of it.
Good.
Okay, make a motion to adopt agenda item 17.
I will second that motion.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that passes 3-0. Okay. Okay, number 25 is to adopt an ordinance amending chapter 28 of the Utah County Court Code, separating the consolidated offices of the county clerk and county auditor for Utah County. And I just want to point out that number 26 is to adopt a resolution to submit a question to the voters where the county should divide the election, divide the elected positions of the clerk auditor into two separate elected positions of the clerk auditor. It's, it's hard to put one before the other, I had to make a decision on that, so I, but I do think that we should probably consider those together.
I agree that we should consider them together.
Okay.
When I had mentioned last week, I had a statement and I've added a few words to it since then. It's in the back podium, if anyone cares to see it, and I'll have it added to the agenda this evening. But I started this review officially a year ago, last month, so about 13 months in looking at this because it came to my attention prior to my ever even running, was there a conflict? And to me, there was. And I went through all of that last week, I won't repeat it. But and the the basis for which they had combined the two elected positions was because the clerks, majority of the clerks' duties were in support of the county judge and court at the time. And when the state took over, the oversight, they moved them physically from the clerks to the county court. And leaving the county clerk positions with those that were left with very little to do, according to the Daily Herald and the resolution written that time in April 1989. We had talked about specialization, we talked about industry standards, we talked about focus the last several months, a couple of years on the growth of the county and that each department needs to be extremely sharp and and clear in where they're going. And so with that in mind, that's why I went through this 13 months of work to get to this point. And Utah Code 17, 16, chapter 16 and section 3 talks about consolidations as well as the separations of those position or any position. And it said that a county legislative body, meaning a county commission, may pass an ordinance that separates any previously consolidated offices without reconsolidating them. In other words, allowing them to be fully separated physically. And as well as, I'm interpreting this piece, their functional focus. And so with that in mind, that's where I started this whole process. And then this is where the conclusion is seen to have run. And my view is that letting the public address this will cost each voter at least 24 months of study to do this. And it is not a limitation of the voice of the people because they've already voiced their opinion through the representatives when they wrote this. The representative wrote this section. It doesn't, I don't have a C a year on this one, but yeah, October 2006, it was amended. But it was amended by the representative body of the people. And so the people have already spoken through the representatives. And my feeling is to go ahead and move forward. We have one position to fill. Every year, the county commission is asked to add positions, sometimes delete positions, modify positions, reassign positions. And so this is going to be an annual thing that we will go through. This is, would not change that process. But our focus today is on one position. And there are existing positions that could be used as deputies for the future one. And so that person who comes in would not be left alone scrambling, figuring things out. We have until February 2nd, that I've requested at least to have a more detailed examination where we can, how we would fulfill that physically as well as the timelines that will be required to accomplish these things. So my view is that we should go ahead and adopt agenda number 25 and strike number 26. Because again, the people have already voiced that 198,000 through 434 people voted for me to take this position to help streamline, make improvements to the county. And that's one of the promises I made I would do, and so that's why I was elected. And hence, that's been my focus for this first year. So that's my feeling on that.
Yeah, so I think, I know, I've said before and I'll say again, I'm not, I'm not opposed to the idea of splitting the clerk and auditor's office. Having served as the clerk auditor myself, I think I understand the duties of that office more intimately than almost anyone else, except for Josh, who currently serves in that position. But I also truly believe that you set people up for success. And I'm going to say with this what exactly what I said when people asked me how I felt about Prop 9. And with proposition nine, I said two things. Number one, to say that it's not going to cost any money is a lie. Inevitably, changing the form of government would cost more money. To pretend that splitting the clerk auditor's office isn't going to cost money is a lie. It will inevitably cost more money. Now, if the people want that, I 100% support it. I definitely can see that there is, there's a lot of work going on in that office. Now, we should also have it be known that with all of the work going on in that office, that office has still received state and national accolades, so it's not like the work isn't getting done. But we set people up for success, that's what decent people do. And if we're going to split the office, we need to set not just the elected official up for success, but we need to set everyone in that office up for success. And therefore, the government of Utah County, and therefore, the people of Utah County up for success. So to say that it won't cost money is not true. And I will say the same thing that I said with Prop 9 as well, that any big changes like this, I think we should ask the people. If we, there are several ways to do that. There's a ballot question, we could do a non-binding ballot question, that could ask the people. We could ask the legislature to put a binding question on the ballot, that could ask the people. We could send out a Qualtrics survey and ask the people. We could hire a a polling firm to do a poll and ask the people. There's a lot of ways that we could ask the people. But I think consistency is important. And I think that if we're going to do this, I'm going to approach this the same way that I did Prop 9, and that is to say that splitting the office isn't going to cost more money is a lie. It absolutely will. And let the people decide. Anytime that we're modeling what Salt Lake County currently does, I think that that's an important thing to do. The two major counties that have a separate clerk and auditors are Salt Lake County and Summit County. And I don't think either one of those are counties that I would like to emulate. So I would agree with putting it to the vote of the people. I've got no problem splitting the office, but if we do, we need to set the people in those offices up for success.
I need to inject something here. This has nothing to do anything similar to Prop 9. I was actively engaged in opposing that. This is certainly the separation of something that has already, it already is separated. What's not separated is the chair that's overseeing two different departments. It's one position, not hundreds of positions.
Prop 9 was not hundreds of positions either.
You're interrupting me, please. It's, we have two separate departments right now. We have one person who oversees two functions. There is some overlap, yes. But we already have two separate departments, we already know what they look like. There is nothing superstitious or hidden from the public at all about this. We have the breakdown who's who and where they are located. And so it's a matter of moving this group into that office as opposed to being in the same general oversight. And to say that this is going to cost, not cost money, is not what I'm saying. I'm saying this is going to cost one position. And every year, we go through the same process of considering staff, additional staff or reducing staff. That's an ongoing process. The county has grown little by little over the years to match the need of the demand on it by the people in the county. That is normal growth. We refine, we just finished talking about the overtime needs for the sheriff to be able to support other events. That's not growing the county government, that is simply meeting the demands placed on that one department. Here, we have a demand placed on two departments being overseen by one person. What that one person needs, we already have a deputy potentially in place. So there's no funding for that seat. So right now, for this discussion, if we're looking at one position, will the county never ever grow again? Of course not, it will grow. Just as I mentioned in my statement, that's again, on the back, I referred this to, I referred to Los Angeles County. referred to Los Angeles County. It has, they call them supervisors, but they have five commissioners in that county. And I understand several other counties in California also. But they have just over 10 million people in their county. They don't run every single person's life. And granted, the commissioners in Los Angeles County have much larger staff than we do. I have one. And we have, I was going to say, we have 88 cities in Los Angeles County. We have, what, 24? If we can't meet the demands on the county with three commissioners and stay as we are, even if we have three or four, five million people, then we are sorely inadequate and have had been in that regard. So to say that, compare us to this idea to Prop 9 is misleading, is extremely misleading. Because Prop 9 was completely changed the whole nature of the government. Here, we maintain the government and change departments to meet the needs of the, placed on it. But again, we already have two separate departments being run by one person. And so we're not growing a government. We're hiring people as we do or look at doing every single year. And then this time, I think because of the need to specialize, be more attuned to industry standards, that we need to do this, have greater focus on those departments. Again, to say this is like Prop 9 is, is very misleading. And to say this won't cost money is also misleading because it is going to cost less than $200,000 for one person. And we have other people that could fill in in other, other ways. So I object to you sinewy, those two points.
So obviously, there's, with any change, there's, there's controversy with it. And so I had the opportunity and I thank both commissioners for the opportunity to have this week to kind of go through more and find out where my mind was on it as well. And I am, and I'll just state right at the very beginning that I'm in favor of voting for the separation of this, of the clerk auditor's office. And I wanted to kind of detail some of the reasons, how I came to that conclusion. Back in 1989, they came to a conclusion where they decided that they needed to combine. And so they did that not through any election process, but they did that with the commissioners and they combined the offices together. And, and so by doing that, because they saw that there was a lack of, of, of work in one area. And by the way, the elected official at that time was paid out, I think for the next 20 months. For 20 months, they paid the rest of that term out and that elected official, because they were elected at the time. But they combined the offices together on an efficiency basis because they thought there wasn't enough work. Well, times have changed and they have changed in a dramatic way. And I think that we can see it from, you know, what's going on in the clerk, the clerk and the auditor's office. There is quite a difference in 1989 to today, even in our population growth or in our workload. And so when I see, when I see that, that, that has changed and the reason why there was a consolidation and that consolidation was a workload consolidation effort, that is not, that is not today. And so what, what's, what are the differences? The differences, of course, have been pointed out over and over, talking about, you know, having a separation. And I think that's good practice. I think that, I think we all agree to that. I'm not trying to say or point fingers that we don't. And I've heard that all, all of us at one point in time said that there's a need. There's probably a need for it. The timing becomes more of the issue than anything else. When's, when is the right time? And, and if we're saying, if we're saying on the one hand that we see the need, but we disagree that it's going to cost more, then do we see the need? Because if there's a need, then we've got to be willing to say, we've got to change something to fit the need. And that may be that we have to spend a little bit more to make the need work. So, and I, and I, I know from conversation, Amelia, you know, when you came into office, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot, hopefully you don't feel bad about that. But when you came in, you know, one of your primary focuses was the elections. And, and, and you had mentioned to me, you know, multiple times that the elections was a primary driver and let's get the elections going and that the audit side was kind of a two-year-out process. So when I, when I hear that, my first thought is, wow, well, and I'm not trying to fault, I'm just trying to say there's a workload issue with her, with an elected official. That primary focus was elections and, and you worked hard on the election side, you know, to get things to a certain standard in a certain area. But on the, on the auditing side, we all know that there's more that can be done.
Absolutely.
And so, and so when I look at that, I think, okay, if we had a separation there, there would be an auditor there that is not worried about the election side, you know, per se. They're, they're worried about the audit side.
So I think it's important to point out though, that every other county has a chief deputy auditor and a chief deputy clerk. Even though the positions are combined, it's a clerk auditor. Curtis Koch has a chief deputy auditor and a chief deputy clerk.
Yeah.
So does Ricky Hatch. So do the other, Summit County, Jess Bradfield has a chief deputy clerk and a chief deputy auditor. And I did not. And this proposal that I've seen doesn't, does not allow that as well. So I think that it's important to point out that one reason I kind of had to pick was because I wasn't given the full staff.
Yeah. And I wasn't trying to, I was just, I was just pointing out.
No, and I, you're right. I didn't have the resources.
Right. But on the auditing side, we went from one to five. You know, we had one person basically there and we went to five. So we have total five now there, which, which is, which is quite an increase in, in staff on that auditing side. And I'm not trying to get into the yeses and nos of all that, but still. And then on the, so on, so the other question that comes up is on, you know, it's been brought up, this Prop 9. Everyone probably knows where I stood on the Prop 9 stuff and fought hard there on that one against it. Here's, here's the difference as I'm seeing it. And that is, is that in our, in, in Election Code 20-A, for, it talks about the different options as ballot propositions mean a question, issue, issue or proposal that is submitted to the voter, voters on the ballot for their approval or rejecting, rejection including. And it lists them. An opinion question specifically authorized by the state legislature. State legislature, okay. A constitutional amendment, obviously, an initiative, a referendum, a bond proposal, a judicial retention question, an incorporation of a city town, or any other ballot question specifically, and I underline this, specifically authorized by the legislature. And so I, I, I look at that, I have questions. I asked Dave, you know, kind of his opinion on the questions on the legal part about throwing this on a, on a ballot. I can see, you know, talking about Prop 9, that one's written right in. That's an obvious one. That one has to go to the vote of the people. There's no question about that one.
Yeah, that's in the, in the statute itself. It specifies that. So that falls within one of these provisions.
It does.
Where it's.
So I, I see that. That's an easy one for me to say it's, it's in there because it's, it's, it says that has to happen. Obviously, back in 1989, there was, there was no, you know, option or they did not take an option or whatever the case to put it on the ballot for the combination or, you know, collaboration or the consolidation of those. And so with, with that knowledge of why they did it back then and that, that were different now, today, I'm, I'm not, I don't see, I, I know the Prop 9 has to, has to go on there, but it doesn't on this one. And as far as I know, there's not one other county either. And there, we have, we're varied, right? We've got some that are split and some that are together and it's all over the state. And I, I'm not aware of one county out there that has gone and tried to put, place it on the ballot before they did, you know, either a split or a consolidation. So I, I, I don't, I don't necessarily see, and I, and again, maybe just to reiterate as I'm looking at all three of us at one point in time, and I think we still hold this, that, that there's a need for that, just on a work no basis, basis and a focus basis. And, and because of that and the history that we have with it being consolidated for the reasons I already specified, it makes sense to me that as we, right now, on the clerk's side are ahead of the big election, which is a presidential election, it makes sense to go through a process now so that we have everything ready to go on the clerk's side. And it makes sense for me on the auditor's side to have everything put into place so that we can have the auditing functions at the highest level possible for the county into the future as we grow into the future. Those are some of my thoughts.
So, I mean, do you agree that we need to make sure that the new elected officials have the resources that they need?
You know, I, I, I do, I do think that that is conversation. Where that goes, I'm not, I haven't worked it through. I've heard some different thoughts on what that looks like. One of them, one of them was an interesting one. And I hate to even say this because I hate to start a conversation that I don't know where it's going to go because I think that's a future conversation. But I'll say it just because you asked the question. We do have a financial director and that financial director's position could be the chief deputy for that, that, that side. And that was, that was a thought that I heard come out of, I think, some of the.
That is what I've mentioned.
Conversations. So.
Right. And see, and that's what scares me. That's why, that scares me. Because that financial position is a CPA. It has high-level requirements and that person needs to have the ability to look at elected officials, including their boss, and say, this is best practice. This is not. And if they're in an appointed position, that becomes a political position. And that right there highlights my concern with saying, we're going to take a career professional with a CPA who has decades of experience, including at the state auditor's office, and say, we're going to make that an appointed position. Because we don't know 10 years from now, five years from now, one year from now, who's going to be elected into that position as, as auditor? And to take the position that was created to put our county on sound ground and make it an appointed position, that's what scares me. I, if we give, so if we give the auditor the chief deputy so that we can make sure that there's professionals that can do that, then are we making the elections director an appointed position? Because that's just really not a good look either. And so I'm not opposed to this, but I just want to make sure that we're setting up our employees and our citizens and our county for success. We are growing at an incredibly rapid rate. Elected officials oftentimes come in with preconceived notions and I would like there to be professionals at the helm of some of these core responsibilities where the elected official sets the vision. But we need to have professionals that have the ability to say, this is best practice, this is not. And then we work together to do what's best for the county.
And I don't, I don't disagree with that, but I do think that that's a, that's a decision, you know, to talk about because.
Right.
It might, you, you may be right. We may say, you know what, we've got to have that, that position. And so it has to be funded differently. Why don't we have it on the, the clerk's side? And, you know, why does the clerk's side, maybe the clerk's side needs to be, needs to be looked at too, you know, and modified. Maybe that's, you know, if we have an appointed position on that side, maybe that, maybe they both need to change. They need to be looked at and analyzed on what that is.
Right. And all I'm saying is I think both need an appointed position because then you've got the elected side and then the non-political side. And I really think that that needs to remain that way because I think, you know, our elections office works very hard to represent all citizens, right? We tend, I, I was a Republican. You know, I'm a Republican at, when I was in that position. And, but we don't, in elections, we don't just serve Republicans. We, we, we serve Democrats. We serve non-affiliated. We serve American independent. We serve libertarians, right? And we need to make sure that those people have that. And I think on the financial side, elected officials get to make the decisions, but I think there need to be career professionals that have qualifications like a CPA, like decades of experience that, that help steer us and guide us.
And so, I mean, the conversation, sorry, if I can say this one thing and then I'll sit back so we can look this way. Sorry, because I, and I think we focus it too much on appointed versus merit. But we've had in the past merited employees that are chief deputies too. And so we have to look at all the angles to it. I think that's, that's fair. It's fair to look at both. I'm not really in favor of that, but I.
And I, yeah, I'm not necessarily in favor of that either because I think the elected official coming in needs someone. I just, I look at this and I don't disagree with it. So you're right, I don't disagree with it. And Commissioner Sakovich, I don't disagree with it. But I really like to know what I'm voting for before I vote for it. It's, it's just, that's just my personal opinion. It's difficult for me to say, I'm going to vote for this in December of 2021 and then we'll decide in December or November of 2022 when we set the 2023, 2023 budget. But that's just me. But I don't disagree that this should occur. I just like to know how things are going to hash out. It's probably the engineer in me. You know what I mean? Like I like to go through from beginning to end. I want to know the whole process. If I'm troubleshooting a wiring system, I'm not going to start just replacing wires. I want to know what caused the fault before I fix it. And it's, it's probably just that aspect of me, how my brain works. But it's like, I want to know the end game before I start at the beginning.
Yeah. The, the, as I mentioned last week and again earlier, today is just for one position. Between now and February 2nd, we have a committee, ad hoc committee between the clerk auditor, our legal department, HR, public works, others that may be affected by this. But they will have a proposal by February 2nd, what this might look like, merit as opposed to appointed. All that can be part of that same discussion. The point here today is the one position. The nuances that must be addressed, there'll be, to make sure that whoever is elected fills, has a place to call home and actually work. We can work on those nuances, get the bulk of it out of the way by February 2nd and fine tune it from there to probably not much later than the beginning of the summer. We should have some clear answers where we're going long before the election, even before the primary.
Right. Well, and so for my personal preference, I would prefer to vote on this February 2nd when we figure out what it's going to be.
Yeah. It would be great, but that would only give five, six weeks before you have to file. And so doing it now provides a greater exposure to more potential candidates to run for these offices.
I literally decided nine hours before I filed that I was going to file to run for clerk auditor.
Wait a second, I thought you had to know the beginning of the.
There are, there are remarkable.
I knew nine hours before that I was going to file. And I filed and won because I knew I was going to.
There are remarkable exceptions, Amelia, and you're one. But anyway, any other discussion? I'm, I'm not the chair.
I guess, I guess there might, are there any discussions?
Any on public?
If you want to, come on up. And if you're online, please hit the button that raises your hand so Alice can see it. We will, these are, so Alice, three minutes will be, just, just kind of look at whatever you, yeah. Just wing it.
I can start my timer. Kristi Henshaw, I just wanted to tell you guys that I really appreciate the time and effort that you guys have spent looking over this. I think this is always a really difficult thing to do and it's always, you never want to be the one that has to, to sort these things out because it is difficult to do. But I do think that the principle of it supersedes any of the issues that you guys have come across. Just a couple of thoughts that I had. Yes, some positions shouldn't be political, but I also think that you can't get away from politics in government. And so your best recourse is separation because we know that power can only check power when you're talking about these types of things. And that's really difficult to do when you have it within one person. And there is more government and then there is essential government. And although this is going to be something that costs money, adding this position for me is essential and it's like an EpiPen for somebody with a severe allergy. And if there were only two county government positions available, I know that one would be the auditor and one would be something else. So I'm not sure what that is. And that's how, that's how important I believe that the auditor position is. Also regarding a version of a referendum, it does not appear in Utah Code. It is a little cumbersome on the legality under 20A1-102 in subsection 4. So if a referendum is initiated by the, or a commissioner and an issue is taken to the public, then it doesn't, then doesn't that reveal that the public doesn't support it or that the commission isn't needed? And so I think that is an interesting route to go. I don't know that I support that right now. There are times where I think it is appropriate for the public's input. And I think you guys have done your due diligence in this and I don't see that that is needed in this situation. And I, I just want to tell you that I really appreciate you guys taking all the hard issues with this in every aspect of it. I think it is a version of just the hierarchy of, of the principles superseding, the funds that it will cost. And I appreciate you guys looking through all the entanglements that you've had to deal with. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Wendy Hart. I wanted to know what she said, I'm very grateful that you guys are doing the hard, hard work, and appreciate that you even are thinking about stuff like this. So, I heard an analogy, I don't sail, but my understanding is that if you're a sailor and you think, should I tack the sails, then you should. And so that's what I see here, that if you're thinking that this may be an issue, then you should do something about it. So, I agree with what Commissioner Lee said, this position is up in 2022, the next opportunity to do this would be 2024, and there might be some sort of, you know, having to pay out the 20 months or something like, we wouldn't, because that's backwards, but, you know, there would have to be something, you know, at that moment in time, 2024, again, with a presidential election, I think would be the wrong time to be trying to do this, so then you would have to put it off to 2026. So, I am, I'm in favor of doing this sooner as opposed to later, because again, I think if you're thinking, should we tack the sails, then we should, so. But again, thank you, because people don't say thank you enough to people in office,
So I spoke with Commissioner Sakovic, that I would follow up with a couple of things if
Who are you?
I just saw, I'm Lisa Shepherd, thank you, Lisa Shepherd, County Commissioner. Okay, so I have a couple of thoughts, things that I just wanted to point out for some of the discussion that I've heard, and just a few things that I've noticed on my own. So, I believe that a new auditor, when I say new, it's because we don't have a clerk or an auditor, we have a clerk auditor, new auditor can pick a chief deputy from candidates that have a CPA. And I also noticed in some of this discussion, I think this is what Burt Harvey said, that a previous chief deputy was a supervisor of the marriage passport division, so we could solve that solution with that, too. And going to that point, too, our normal budget season, as you all well know, is September through December timeframe, and that is the appropriate time to really make that decision about how you're going to staff both of those departments and fund them. And the cost that we could recoup in more, the more focused ability onto audits, I think is really something that I haven't heard mentioned much. Also, appointed versus merit, as an appointed employee, I think it's best to always tell the truth and not to filter my advice to my commissioner, or as to the work that I do, whether that I am appointed, or if I would be a merit, I wouldn't ever tell something or do something that should be fireable, and I would never want to work for somebody that would base my honest advice, whether it be CPA firms or in the position that I'm in, I wouldn't want to work for somebody that would ever want me to do something different. So, you know, I just, I just think that that needed to be made. You know, again, I wanted to reiterate, because I know there's people from public watching, that the internal funds are what cover our rent, and also those internal funds are what cover our phone and our computer, our computers are hard cost, but the phone lines, that is internal fund, which means that we're already paying for some of these things, and it's just a shifting, I mentioned that before. The other things I just thought of, and maybe it won't be as well-received as I would hope it would be, but when, if there's anyone that's concerned about the internal, the ongoing cost of this, I would just say that we just voted to supply beautiful Christmas lighting for nearly $30,000, and I would think that that, that we could use some of that money in the future.
You know, we can't use that money, that's tourism dollars, and we can't
Oh, you're right.
Use tourism dollars to pay for an auditor.
You're right. Okay, nevertheless, it's still $30,000 that we voted to do for Christmas lights. So I think that it would be really good. And also, public comment is just my comment, I don't think I'm supposed to be interrupted in that. So, and also, on those counties that have taxable, and who is, who is combined and who is not, just remember, it's a, for anybody that's watching, it's, it's on Commissioner Sakovic's paperwork, that is the document that's on the, the agenda system, it's on page three, the third paragraph. Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm Burt Garfield, Chief Deputy Assessor.
Maybe the final word, how about that? Maybe, it's a maybe.
Maybe. So I'm in a unique position as the chief deputy of the department. I'm appointed, but it's a pretty skilled set of responsibilities, I put a value on every house in this county through statistical modeling, I'm a real estate praiser, management, training, and stuff like that. It seems to me with the clerk and the auditor's office have split, you would probably need a chief deputy in both. There's enough volume of work in either department to justify a chief deputy assessor, I mean, chief deputy. And if you're saying that there's going to be someone in the office that could just fill into that position, that makes me think, then what they're doing now will be, have to be backfilled by somebody else. You can't just move somebody one responsibility to another unless they're going to take everything they were doing with them. But it seems like there's enough work that as a chief deputy in either one of these departments, you're going to have enough work, just being the chief deputy, for both departments to justify a position. And if you're moving somebody, someone's going to have to backfill that position and take up those responsibilities. And if that person's highly trained, great, even the better, but in my, the way I see it, you'll probably plan on having it, if you want to do them right, you should probably plan on having a chief deputy for both of them. So, just my two cents.
Thank you, Perry.
All right, thank you. And there's one person online, if they will state their name.
Tyson Zimmerman, if you want to go ahead and proceed.
Yeah, this is Tyson Zimmerman, I live in Alpine. Wanted to echo appreciation for the dialogue on this one, I think it's a great issue to discuss, and I appreciate your guys' tackling this one. Just wanted to make a simple comment, respond to the comments that were made about setting people up for success. I think that's a good point, I would argue that we've already not set this person up for success, right? We're putting two roles into one. It seems like we have the infrastructure to support those two roles, because we're doing the two roles. But we have one person doing two roles, and so, to make two roles become more efficient, you separate the roles. So I would just argue that it's more efficient to separate the roles, I get that there's some, some questions that haven't been answered as to the logistics of it, but I speak in favor of this and separating these roles, I think it will create more transparency and more efficiency in the auditing role than we have had in the past. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any others online there, Alice? I don't see any.
Looks like you have to be just fairly not one more.
One more? Okay.
Robert Stevens, if you'd like to go ahead and unmute, you can go ahead.
Hi, this is Robert Stevens. I know you're tired, so I'll be quick. I've written you letters about the FAA land classification, this is public information. I called up the assessors in Salt Lake, and other places around the state, and they just say, hey, if you give me your serial number, I'll just look it up, and I'll tell you how the land is classified
Hey, Robert, can I interrupt you for a second? I, I think your comments, and I could be wrong, but I think your comments are, are probably more suited for our general comment at the end, general public comment.
Oh, okay. I thought you were there, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're not there yet, if you could hold off, and then we'll, we'll get there probably soon.
Okay, agreed.
Okay, yeah, hang, hang tight. Any, any others on this, this agenda item, or these agenda items, as we're looking at both of them? All right, I don't see any then. Motions would be in order?
I'll make a motion that we adopt Agenda Item 25.
Is there a second? I'll, I'll go ahead and second that. Any further discussion on that?
I would just like to see it continued until February 2nd, when we have a better idea of what it'll look like, that would be my preference. That's just my comment on it.
All in favor of the motion to adopt Agenda Item Number 25, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? And opposed?
Aye.
That's, that's two to one. Item Number 26.
I'd still like to see us poll the people, so I'll make a motion to approve Item Number
For a second? No second, okay, that ties for lack of second. All right, thank you for being with us, we have no, no, well, we had our work sessions already, that's what messes me up every time, messes me up when we put them at the beginning. But we do have public comments still, and so, Robert, if you're still on there, we'll put you up first for general public comment.
Okay, thank you very much. My name is Robert Stevens, I have land in the county. I've been involved in the green belt lawsuit with the state. They think my land should be classified as category in irrigation, which, you know, the average citizen would think, well, if it's going to be in a category where you can irrigate it, then you've got to be able to have the means to irrigate it, which would probably mean that you've got to have a ditch, and water, and water shares, and the land sloped, such that you can water all the land. But in most of our parcels, that's not the case, and so, all we can do is to plant and hope that in the springtime, that the drought hasn't already ruined the grass seed, and then in the fall, a rancher will arrive and cut and bale the hay. So, so, I asked if I could find out how the parcels around me are classified under FAA, and this ranges from, from dry or meadow, or, or orchard irrigated, or grazing land, or land that's not productive at all. What I found was, I was told to go submit a grandma request, which I did, and then I was denied. And, and I haven't been offered an explanation of why it was denied, and so then, I called up the state and, and other county assessors around the state, and the information is public information. In fact, in Salt Lake, I can go online and enter in a serial number of a parcel, and I can see how that land was classified under FAA, and so it's freely accessible, it's public elsewhere, but not here in Utah County. And so, I don't know if it's an oversight or an underside, or you just don't have the software available, but I, I know it's out there, and the data's out there, and I'd like to go and access it, and so, I'd like you to help me in some way, so I can access that information and find out how the parcels around me are classified.
Robert, did you, did you apply for an appeal for that grandma deny?
I did.
You did? I, I don't, I
Who did you?
We, we actually haven't seen an appeal yet, so can we maybe have you follow up with?
Usually appeal that to the chair, so I haven't
Okay, could you follow up with Commissioner Lee on that? Because we haven't seen the appeal to that, and I would love, because typically, an appeal to a grandma deny comes to the commission, and I think we could probably work with you on that. So if you'll follow up with Commissioner Lee, I think we'd be willing to hear the appeal to that. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other public comment? Your chance.
Eldon, we'll hold it open for you.
Five, four, three.
Bill's going to get the Jeopardy theme on his phone and hold it up.
My name's Eldon, I just wanted to, I've been a little flippant, a little casual here, and I wanted to apologize.
Well, we're friends, Eldon, that's okay.
But I realize we're not really, you were not family, and I should be more courteous and, and a little more formal, and so I apologize if I've offended you, but I also
You offended me, just for the record.
Dave, I do go back a long ways with Commissioner White and Gary Anderson and so forth, and I
I look forward to our years of friendship coming ahead.
I hope so. I also, I wondered if Glenn Tanner, is that an appointed office, or is that a, because I would like to, if it's appointed, I would like to, because he's not doing his job up there. And so I really would like to, if it's an appointed office, I would like to apply to that.
Is, is my memory deceiving me, but didn't you commend Glenn and
I did, but I go up there
In a meeting just a few weeks ago?
Yes, I did, but I withdraw that. Two days ago, I went up to get some cattle off, I wish you'd have been there, Commissioner Gardner.
You didn't invite me two days ago, I'd have come.
No, but I invited you to meetings, and that's, and you just didn't show. But, but the, we have discussed that with Commissioner Lee, that that meeting is, is possible, and then, it's, a meeting will do, and then you can join us. So it's not your meeting, but you can join us. So we'll get that date together, and, but one of the things that I noticed when we went up there, we were six of us, and we had two cows, three cows, we've tried a bunch of times, but they're like elk now, but we brought them clear down from the mountain over a period of five, six hours, actually, I was on horse 10 hours, but anyway, we, up and down, and they came out right on top of Highway 6 and 89, I don't know if you've been there or not.
Many times.
That beautiful country there, somebody is ripping that to pieces there, and, and I talked to Bryce, who's used to be friends of mine, friend of mine now, and, and he said that no application has been made to, to cut that in. And my, kind of my job, right, Dave, is to make, just kind of watch out for the country, if somebody's messing with it, then to kind of let you know. And so, I, boy, I'd sure like to, to not see, because I went down there, we came down, the cattle got around us and went back up, so wasted day. But, we dropped in there, and they have cut roads, 25 miles of roads in that little 500 acres, or however much it is. They're obviously preparing for a development in there, and that's not right to do, you know, that's, that's drainage, that's country shouldn't be developed. But he has done his roads, made some pads in there, and all of those things. And tomorrow, I'm going to meet with Bryce, and we're going to see what we can do to, talk about that. Anyway, it always concerns me, because I don't like to see this old country go to hell, you know, I like to see it kind of, Dallas, that's all right to say it go to hell.
It's one of the Bible words, you're good.
Yeah, that's right. Thanks very much, I appreciate you, I really do feel, this is such a friendly commission. One of the things I believe, as I've been here, I'm going to, I'm going to compliment you now, I don't feel like you feel you're better than us common folks, and I think that is a great compliment, to feel like you folks feel you're, like you said, a piece of shit, or something like that, and that's all right to do that. What's that?
I said half-assed.
Okay, that's what it was. But you don't feel like you're better than the rest of us, and I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Eldon. All right. We will now go into our, our closed meetings, thank you for this meeting and being here.